Bob, do you know Jan?
Oh.
Jan Delrin, football.
I know, you see what he did for me. Turned him around. And put a new one on.
Good morning. It is July eighth. This is the Broadwater County Commissioners Meeting. If you would all stand with us and say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming. Greg, you are here. I apologize, we do not have those deeds yet for you. So I'm going to put you back on the agenda for ten o'clock. You're welcome to stay if we get those at any time, just like last week, and we'll interrupt the agenda to get that taken care of.
I got a, in case she's, she mentions how complicated it was, we got a, that's a quick claim deed, a little rough draft that you could pass on, or that just simply download it off the Internet. Pretty simple, really. I mean, I don't understand the holdup on the whole thing.
All right. Give that to him.
May I approach?
Absolutely, yes.
I, the question that they had on the ownership of the area of Bridge Street adjacent to lot one and two on this side, and there was a question because Bill Lane owned it. So anyways, what I did was I highlighted these areas adjacent to this area, the orange and the yellow, and there are deeds to Bill Lane from nineteen ninety-five. I didn't go any further than that to see when they got it from the Commission, but Jeanie Mitchell had it at that point in time and then sold it. So I made a copy of the map, and there's a deed that coincides with the color of those three where Jeanie Mitchell had it. So Mr. Brecker was wondering about this area of Hill Street also, since he owns one and two now, I believe. But there was a previous deed for that to Jeanie Mitchell and Julia before that.
Okay.
So he would have to work out something on that area with Tom.
Yeah, okay.
That track C.
Mm-hmm, there's a deed for it. Because at that point in time, I believe Julia or whoever owned lot four. I'm not sure. I didn't, I found the deeds and, you know, I didn't waste a lot, a lot of time on it.
Oh, that's.
It was.
That's on down.
Now, these don't affect great.
That's all down.
These do not affect great, but Mr. Brecker was in at the same time saying that he's getting a deed, and I said I would see if there were deeds on that. And there was.
Yes.
So it's, it's from, little dug and drifts.
Yes, damn.
So Bill Lane said that they hear that he had a deed for that.
Yes, and the, the last part on his is Bill Lane's deed, but I just had got the.
I didn't know you knew them.
Where, you know, they were on a separate meeting before Bill Lane bought it. So I made five copies, one for each of you and Ann, and then Carla.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you. That's actually quite a bit.
So should I not worry about coming in at public time and checking, or?
You, you sure can. If you want, I'd be happy to call you, whatever you would like to do.
Okay.
It's your call.
Well, maybe if it happens by noon or something, you could, or after lunch right away, maybe call. And otherwise, I'll see what work we're into and if I can get away, but seems like a horrible waste of time, but I don't know what else to do.
I apologize. Like I said, Greg, as soon as it comes in, I will stop everything to get that taken care of.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, Community Update. Franklin, what you been up to this week?
I didn't go to any, didn't have anything to go on. Good work.
All right. I actually was the same with the holiday. It was kind of nice. It was kind of a slow weekend, or a slow week, and was able to be home every night, which is a nice change. So, let's see, Brian is not here yet. Brian, do you want to start in early?
Sure.
All right, our agenda does say these issues and times are subject to change, so since you're here and we're ready, let's jump in at ten fifteen. Brainholm, Solid Waste Department, have things.
Well, it's a Monday.
Did you I am?
In every way possible. We have had Monday after a long weekend. In the last month, the biggest thing we did was we had our little meet and greet meeting down in the South End of the county. And I, I thought it went fairly well. We got some good feedback. We definitely heard some, some of the cons of putting and expanding our district down there. I have had a couple of people show interest in the opt-in program from that end of the county. And that was good. Had one lady who's interested in possibly serving on lot one, which is good. That was kind of one of the bullet points I wanted to stress down there. And other than that, I think, I guess the ball's back in the Commission's court as to what to do with the resolution intent. If you let it die on the vine or act on whatever your mind.
What I would like, and Franklin, whatever you like as well on this, is just direction for me, or if you guys would like to proceed, then I think it would be appropriate for us to proceed.
And now be our topic.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that, Franklin?
I'd say it depends on, on the public comment, which way it goes on that. I can see the concern a lot, where they can get their, they can take their garbage to Logan there for forty, fifty dollars a year instead of going into the district for the hundred and twenty-eight to start off, but I can see the concern. So I guess it just depends how, how they all decide on it.
And that the resolution of intent is not to make the decision, is to provide the decision to those citizens so they can make the decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, up to them.
We have nothing to public comment on yet. All we've heard is what they're.
And you didn't really offer anything. You were listening at that point, right?
Yeah, we were just there to present information and gather information. We'll discuss that at our next board meeting. Are you sure?
When is your next board meeting?
It will be. Twenty-third of July.
Seven PM at the Betsy Poker Room?
Yes. And, like I said, today's been a Monday. We've had better truck in the shop over the weekend than to get some things fixed and the things we had in there to get fixed, none of them were fixed. It looks like we're going to have to struggle through today and get back into the shop this afternoon. We've got a clutch issue that is not. We'll get it taken care of, and we got two canisters, twenty-yard canisters to kind of supplement cardboard recycling and our rental fleet. Those are in. We've had a lot of rental cans out lately, which is good. That brings revenue to us, so we're excited about that.
Where are those at, Brian?
Oh, we've had some out at Goose Bay. Had a couple of housing demolition projects, new one at the school and one out at Watson's. So those were big projects that we had to take care of, fit into the rest of our duties, and just the occasional garage cleanup, that kind of thing. The people want, so. One or two at a time isn't bad, but we got five or six out. It's a little crazy. But we've managed. And. It's been steady, but nothing out of the ordinary, so we're good. Any questions?
I have a little piece of information. I don't know if I talked to you about this before, but there was a new law passed in the legislature on mobile homes. If a person has, like a trailer park owner has a trailer that's been abandoned, it used to be they had to pay all the back taxes in order to dispose of it. This House Bill three twenty-four, I think, don't quote me on the number, but it allows now that as long as there's a receipt that that trailer was taken and disposed of, those taxes are waived. Since the landowner is not the one who didn't pay their taxes, it was decided that they should be able to dispose of the trailers without having to, you know, pay all that money to do so. So it should help with the safety issue. It should be also something you might be addressed with.
Yeah, and we, we've been good about giving people receipts, invoices and receipts on that, so.
Very good.
Shouldn't be a problem. I did see, I was in Calistel yesterday, and there was a front page article, Daily Interlet, that concerned recycling in the Flathead Valley. They have an issue, their solid waste board is struggling with whether they want to continue their recycling program or not because of the costs associated with it. Contrary to popular belief, there is no money in recycling. Every solid waste program, municipal solid waste program in the country that runs a recycling program has to subsidize it, and it's just to what level of subsidization you want to do. So in Broadwater County, we're kind of fortunate. We've got a grassroots group that has taken that on, but I think at some point they're either going to come ask us to help them out or just stop. And because it's, you can do it till you feel good all you want, but at some point it needs to pencil out and make some money, or it, it's just not going to work. And Flathead County's in that boat right now. Their contractor for recycling just renewed their contract and upped their cost by a factor of three. So it, it's at the point now where they're going to have to look at, at spending a significant amount of money to keep their cardboard and plastic and glass recycling program going, and they don't know if they're going to do it. There's definitely the, the public outcry of wanting to have recycling, so it comes to that point where, how much is a municipality willing to spend to give the, their, their citizens the satisfaction of being able to recycle their, their waste? So it's just one of the issues out there. Montana's a hard place to recycle because it's so far from the secondary markets. There's a lot of transportation cost involved, and unless you do it like we're doing here with volunteer labor, it just doesn't pencil out, so. An issue that we'll keep an eye on. I'm not saying we're going to do anything with it right now, but it's definitely something we have to think about in the future, as well as every other community in the state, so.
Right, yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, any questions, Franklin?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you.
You bet.
Very much. And, yeah, let us know what your board wants and what they think about. All right. Good luck with your Monday.
See ya.
See ya. All right, ten fifteen. We already have a schedule. Go ahead and jump into some mail.
See ya.
This is from the, the Department of Public Service Regulation, PSC, Public Service Commission. And, read this a week ago, on vacation brain. And they are looking at, oh, Big Sky Transfer and Storage, American Ballers. It doesn't really pertain to us, but it's good information to know. They also have Montanans for Responsible Energy Development, just a newsletter and an envelope if you would like to donate. And petition will be addressing here in a couple of weeks, two weeks. This is for thirty-five mile per hour speed limit on Quarter Circle Road. You can look at that if you want to. And do I need to give that to you to hold, or should I just keep it in the mail for now?
Grand Chairman, the signatures have been verified on there as much as possible. The supporting documents have not come in yet to go along with the signatures.
Okay. I will follow up with that this week. May postpone our public hearing.
There's been most of the people in the area there, it looks like.
All right, we have the Quarterly Stewart from Bureau of Land Management, a newsletter. We have our mail just giving us a little snippet information about the security monitoring that was done at the senior center. This is a letter from Rocky Mountain Development, and it is for the budget, so I will put it with the budget information when we're done. But what it is, is an update, a daily update they give us on the number of conjugate meals they serve, which is meals on wheels, the number of meals that are served at the supper club. Also, Rocky Mountain funds a part-time employee who goes into the homes of some of our elderly who are not able to leave, to kind of check up on them, situate their medications, help clean house a little bit, clean refrigerators, that kind of thing. And it also shows some of the other things that Rocky does on the second page. And for one more, this is from DEQ, Montana Department of Environmental Quality, and they have not received, had not received the water sample from the silos as of the mailing date for that letter. I did follow up with Sharon Walker down at the KAWA, and she had it ready to be sent, so they should have it by now. These are signature items. Going to be way ahead of schedule. That's a good thing. This is from the Broadwater Conservation District. It is a grant, and you did sign it at a meeting on, I think it was May fourteenth. And that just needs to come before the Commission to get a full vote, vote, full vote of the board so that it is official. And I believe that was signed by you probably at their meeting.
Yeah, right, the conservation, see the date here offhand.
It's on the very bottom of the page.
Oh, okay.
I would, I believe it would be appropriate, it's to protect you. You do need the backing of the full Commission, or at least two-thirds of it, in order to sign something like a grant. As it stands now.
It was just for, for an application, but.
Yep, yep. If you want to table it, that's your call.
Wrong, no, they can motion it. Brand application I signed at the conservation.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to support the signing of a Conservation District grant with DNRC. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. All right. The Conservation Trust, the Trust Board, which is funded from the sale of the cabins along the lake years ago, has a account of at least two point five million dollars. By law, they are able to spend anything above that corpus as long as they leave the two point five million in the investment account. They receive the statement every month. They have taken out some of the money and been doing grants, and this is one of the grants. After the Trust Board approves a grant, it comes to the Commission for final approval, and then they can draw the money. This is a third, two grants, one for twenty thousand, one for ten thousand, and it is to assist with the purchase of the Silos property that was a BCDC-headed project.
This is Silos itself?
Mm-hmm, the Silos property, seventy-four acres of wetland.
What, a motion on this here?
Yep, we do need to make it official.
Yeah, I move that there. Make sure that Robert Trust, money go to the. Bring those. Can you vary sales, house sales, cabin sales goes to the purchase of that property, of the Silos?
If I can offer a friendly amendment, it is just from the Broadwater Trust Board. The, the funding for the Trust Board is just the history, but now it's the Trust Board funds.
Right, right.
Okay, I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to move and support the Broadwater County Trust Board grant to BCDC for thirty thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We also have, this morning we received a request from Brenda on her budget. We do need to officially request some assistance right now for our budgeting process. We have entered the fiscal year as of last Monday. We have some closeout work to do for the end of the fiscal year and some new work to do for the new fiscal year. We have put out feelers to people who would be interested and willing to assist on a temporary basis. Lewis and Clark County has said they would be willing to help. I also contacted Lori Moes, who came in and helped once in the past. She is busy. I think it would be appropriate for the Commission to jointly request the assistance of Lewis and Clark County just to get us on our feet right here at budget time.
What's the charge from?
That we don't know at this point. We'll have to put a letter of request to them first and then address that. And I think with everything going on, it would be appropriate that we put in a request and have it officially noticed in the meeting that we're doing so.
Laura, this is wrong.
Just, John?
You cannot bring another county.
No, John, you are out of order. Thank you very much.
You're out of order. You can't bring another county into our business.
John, that's enough.
Don't speak out of turn, Kay.
Well, when is my turn?
Well, when she addresses you, so just.
Okay, address me.
Sit tight.
No.
Okay, there you go.
Do you support putting together just a request for assistance from Lewis and Clark County for the budget?
We're going to have to do something, so I guess if we got anybody else, we'd have to go with some help that they can send over.
So that's a yes?
Yeah.
All right. I don't think we need a vote at this time since we have nothing to vote on, but I think I'm going to ask for it just as a double check.
Okay, and I think we should check some more in the county here that we can get.
Do you have any ideas? I'm open to them. And I think Elaine would be open to them as well. So any ideas you have? Put them on the table, and we'll contact them as well, kind of put out an RFP.
Right, right. I haven't thought about anybody. Lori Moes was a one to contact, all right. I think some of the past. What about Trudy Gillespie? How much she worked on the budget?
Right, she was not a finance officer, but we could certainly ask her.
Other than that, I can't think of anybody else right now, but I'm sure there has to be somebody who just gets.
So will you make a motion for the record to proceed with getting some assistance to help with the budget?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to get some assistance to work on this budget, whether it's, if we have to go out of county, I guess we're going to have to, but let's try some more in the, in the county here. Maybe some former employees that I can't get right now, but.
I'll second the motion.
Personal, retired people.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to pursue assistance at this point for our budget season. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, let's see. We have some safety issues with the grass that we discussed last week, where the grass is, is a good number of inches above the sidewalk. Somebody is going to step on the grass and twist an ankle, fall down, break a bone, what have you. Mike has talked with Pat Plattenberg, who is willing to help him cut the sod back to make that more of an even line between the sidewalk and the grass. This will cost some money in purchasing new sod, renting equipment, what it would be, I don't know. I would like an official voice of support for this project.
I haven't looked at it. I don't know what your problem is. It's a. That's pretty normal, lawns building up like that. It might be maybe with the sawdust, or you just make a pass through there. I don't know how. The dangerous part of, the safety part of it is. You know, I have to know where the safety issue really come in.
Just what Mike described last week.
If they're on the lawn and they walk over the sidewalk.
No, I'm seeing somebody on a walker walking down the sidewalk that accidentally puts it down on the grass is now a six-inch diagonal. Somebody who's walking down the sidewalk and accidentally steps to the side and steps on the six-inch incline of the grass is now. Somebody who's walking down the sidewalk and accidentally steps to the side and steps on the six inch incline of the grass is now twisting your ankle. It's just what Mike described last week in his update to us, this was an issue that he brought up.
Yeah, I was gonna look at it, and I forgot about it.
Do you want to table that issue? His volunteer assistants wants to get started on the twenty second. So if we do want to take advantage of some very inexpensive labor for the county, it would be a good idea to address this next week. If you're open to that?
Yeah, the only thing we should have to do, I'm just thinking is get a little walk behind saw cutters and maybe a couple passes through there, just what I'm thinking in my mind. Shouldn't be that much.
And if you would volunteer to help with the budget, that'd be great with your expertise.
I'd like to do it real quick with my back on.
All right.
But I'm gonna look at it, I'll try to look at it either noon or afternoon.
Okay, we have a county procurement policy. This is a state policy, or at least what the state does. This is for, I would propose, if that is supported by the commission, adding that to the personnel policy handbook. And what it is, is just a policy for contract labor. We do quite a bit of contract labor in the county. Of any number of things. We talked with Mike last week about the elevators, about the generators, volunteers like the school that has rebuilt the senior center on ramps, tree board built for the sidewalks, rotary that helped with the senior center planting. Security issues at the detention center. Quite a few.
Yeah, this would be added to our existing policy, right?
And it's correct.
It should take a while to go through everything, but I'm assuming that everything's probably fine. Do we need a motion, I don't know if that's a big issue. Additions to their policy that's outlined by the Montana Operations Manual.
And what we are doing is actually passing procurement methods and policies. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, I second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to approve and adopt the procurement rules and methods policy for Broadwater County to be added to the personnel policy handbook. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Here's a letter requested from Heather Norris beyond the complaint of the county attorney.
Excellent, thank you very much. Oh, Tyler Technologies, they manage, I don't have a document from them, but they manage our accounting systems, computer wise. And what we need to do is release the information to, from Tyler Technologies to Debbie Kelly, H R, and Doug Ellis, Clerk of the Quarter of Treasury for the budget. And they would like, in the past it's just been done, but I think it would be an idea to just have officially in the minutes that we both support temporary administrative rights to budgeting through Tyler Technologies. Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to sign a letter with the passing temporary administrative rights for budgeting through Tyler Technologies in to the Clerk of the Quarter of Treasury and feature manager payroll for Broadwater County, all those in favor say aye. I'll take that in just a moment. Aye, motion carries. All right, Cheryl, did you have a question?
I'd be more comfortable if you were going to do that temporarily, you have a given period of time.
I, it will depend on the budget. We don't have a set period of time for the budget. The Department of Revenue will let us know what our valuation is, which sets our mills, which starts our countdown for the budget in early August. Depending on when that happens, is when our countdown starts, and depending on how fast we get through it, is when we get done. So, this is something that should be a check and balance anyway. It shouldn't ever be just one person who has access to those kinds of records, it should be something that there are other official eyes on. Doug Ellis, this Clerk of the Quarter, is an elected official of this county, so it would be entirely appropriate that he have administrative rights to any budgeting technology or programs. All right, we're ten minutes early. And I don't see that we have claims because Tammy was on vacation last year, last year, last week. And we don't have payroll, we took care of that, so we're we'll just wait for Dana. Cheryl, yes?
That, that resolution that you passed for adoption into the personnel policy?
It wasn't a resolution, it was a procurement policy and methods.
I'm sorry, does that also then, when D E S, Montana D E S asks for the county to implement or to, to design or whatever, that solves that problem?
Yes, it does, yep. Since we have eight minutes, is there anything for the good of the order, Franklin? Or anything for the public at this point? All right, we're gonna hold you, Karen. Oh, one thing I should mention that Tammy asked me to mention. Fair Board, Michelle Christensen has put in three claims and she does not have receipts for them. The way this has worked in years past is she turns in a claim and it pays for prizes for the fair. So she pre buys those, she will give out, or certificates, excuse me, give out the number she needs and then at the end of the fair, she turns in the receipts. Usually she is under budget, under her claims, and Tammy will refund that money back into her fair account. The fair board supervises what she does, we have a double check on what she does, but Tammy asked me to bring that to your attention of these claims.
How much were we talking about roughly in the past?
This claim is for twenty four hundred dollars and this money is already in her budget. This one is for five hundred and thirty seven. And that one actually does have a receipt, so the only one without a receipt is twenty four hundred. And there's another one in here somewhere or else Tammy can have it, or is it lunch? There's three of them. So, this is something that she says she would be willing to provide a full report at the end of the fair, if you'd like to have that. But again, like I said, it is something that is supervised by both the fair board, of course Tammy as the claims clerk, and this commission.
You said that maybe we have some receipts by?
End of the fair. She has no receipts at this point, she pre buys that she has it, but she doesn't know how many people have put in. Please, yes.
Franklin, this is, this is for the cash prizes for the fair, and they don't know how much it is ahead of time. So, she authorized, she's asking for authorization for the money so that they can hand out cash, so they don't have to write checks for every single one. And that's, that's what.
Then you've got the check and balance, the fair board. Okay, if that's the way. If it's only worth, then I guess I'm not gonna muddy it any at this point, you know.
All right, well, when you go through the claims, you'll see at least two, if not three in there, and if there's not three, there will be. It's probably a state to staple to another claim in there, is what Tammy thinks. So we have five minutes. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You was talking about the grass. The sidewalk itself parts up, it's more dangerous than the grass.
Yes, and we discussed that last week with Mike as well, and he has a plan to put that together as well and got approval last week. It's part of his job description as well. This is a project that goes a little bit beyond that, and because he is getting volunteer help and has a deadline, he wanted it just for the keep it smooth, get it approved through the commission so that there's, there's no worries once he gets started. Trudy?
Is there an update on Commissioner Gravely?
She is feeling better, she is at Fred Moyn's funeral today, and I'm hoping she'll be with us this afternoon.
Thank you.
You bet. Hey Dana.
Hi.
How are ya?
Good.
Want to join us?
Yeah.
All right, we're running a little early today. Dana Ralzer, Road and Bridge Operations Manager, hiring updates.
Well, all right. Well, just got back, so this is what T J's got. We changed that pipe up on Roscoach, I think we mentioned that last time, got that changed. They graded and hauled some on Roscoach, we had to haul a little bit up from just above the canyon up into that first hill up there, it's probably about a quarter mile. It's got a little muddy up there, so we just kind of cleaned that mud up a little bit, but they got all that bladed out all the way through to basically up Phil Norris up there, so that should be good for a while. Hauled on Flint Lane from Lewis Flims to DeCrick Cemetery Road. That's kind of a washboardy mess there, so we got that cleaned up, and we put them extensions on that pipe coming out of Moon Run there too, so got that done. They hauled some on Lower Duck Creek Road, out to going down Porger Confederate there. There was a little bit we didn't get done, there was a few more rocks showing up, basically there from where we quit last spring to on the down toward that first corner.
Oh, the fir, the first sharp quarry there?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there were some big, big rocks coming up there, so we got them covered up so at least we can do something without pumping a bunch of that, but they hauled on all that bomb road up there on that chunk that Cypher's called on. They got all that hauled on and fixed up with some red lime, so it should be.
They seem to be happy there then.
I haven't had calls, so, I haven't either. They graded Mighty Lane, Mighty Lane to, that's Mighty to Hosfeld. That's Mighty to Hosfeld. Oh, yeah, whatever, I guess I don't know what that is. Hauled, graded on Jones and Loop, Louis Kiddo.
Louis Kiddo?
Yeah, that north piece from two eighty five back to the orange crowds there. You know, that's basically all county road up through that Bradley Lane and all that, we don't touch Bradley Lane except for down to the down to the recycle plant. I've talked to a few of them ranchers out there, I mean, just as soon as it was left alone. You know, we haven't touched it forever, so they don't like too many people driving back through there. See, the Ferret Smith Dry Hollow, had a little washing on Dry Hollow, I remember when I was talking to you on that Dry Creek. Actually Bob Davis called me, and he said that they had some washing down on Dry Hollow too, so we, they went and cleaned that up, graded that, so.
Toshman Road, the upper part, was anything, were they made up there or do you know?
Yeah, we were up there last, two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, okay, it's been, I just thought of that couple, three weeks ago and.
Yeah, I think it was after we talked about.
Oh, okay, I guess I talked to you there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yes.
Yeah, 'cause we went up there, I know it was always a set mark up there that one day when we didn't, waiting for something else, but.
That one stretch at Washboards there is so bad.
Yeah.
Wouldn't hurt probably to put some stuff in there, there's a little bit, just below the dam there.
Yeah, that's all that round river rock stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know if we can.
Put something a little over the top of that or?
Yeah. There are a lot of people go up there, but I mean, I need to figure out what I can get that's close.
Yeah, yeah, some finer pit run stuff, shale or something like that. But it just something, it's sure not a priority, but.
Yeah, and that one, that one on oh, just across Cattle Guard, you know, for that little short stretch you're talking about.
Yeah.
Whether maybe, how, well, it gets real rough through that.
Yeah, it's real fast right there, that's why if.
I'm wondering if a guy maybe just go in there and cut down, I know there's, there's clay in there along that bank, I just don't want to make too big of a mess there, but we can go check that out a little bit.
There again, of course, gonna have some pit run type materials that work. Somewhere that you start digging down, you're gonna get more and more rock there. I don't know about that one, it's a bit farther up than you know you are.
Didn't Morse have a gravel pit up around there somewhere?
I think the state at one time, but, boy, that's.
Up past, you get a hole to siphon there?
Yeah, and off to the right, oh, yeah, that's some pretty good stuff there, before you get to the side, that state right there.
Yeah, I'll have to.
I'd haul some stuff out years ago, that, that is some pretty good material there, I wonder.
I could get a hole in state, maybe a C or something, and see if.
Yeah.
We might have to file a new pit or something, but that would be okay.
'Cause I remember I'd haul some stuff out there years ago, and that is, that's some pretty good stuff, that'd be good for that stretch, and they'd be close too.
Yeah, just to kind of tie it together.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check into that a little bit.
There was another down lower, but that was more rip rap type rock, rubble rock. Yeah, I forgot about that right there.
And there, I got Marks on vacation this week, but T J and Willie there out on Sand Hill right now on that north piece from Cottonwood out north. Had a little bit of a water problem out there. With somebody's irrigation, so cut a pretty good ditch along the road, so they're out there moving the road back over and trying to get it cleaned up. But other than that, that's about all I know.
That's quite a bit?
Well, yes, but.
Did anybody call you from the Silos area?
No.
Got a few phone calls looking for who to thank for the work you guys did down there. I told them to call you directly, so.
And I, well, I don't know, I, I had my phone shut off for two weeks, so.
Oh, okay, that's probably.
Told them to direct everybody to the shop.
They might have made the, the calls to there, I don't know, but I wanted them to talk to you, so, just to let you know, there were quite a few very thankful people.
County or B S E did it?
Well, B S E, I went down there, there was a couple places there that were a little bit rocky and a little bit muddy, so had B S E go in and haul some stuff and clean that up.
Yeah, could I have a little discussion on our community out there at the Silos? I don't know who blade of the road out there on, oh, about a month ago.
Yeah, B S E, is it on, in a subdivision itself?
It's on Peter Stage Coach in that area. They done the sorryest darn blade of job I ever saw, I went out there and had a little discussion with the lad on the blade. I was wondering who done that job.
Yeah, that was B S E.
Well, he needs a little more training.
Yeah, I know some of it, there's, some of it doesn't have enough material on it, you know, trying to get that.
Well, they come in there and the first thing, two passes, he drags all the rocks that are in the borrowed ditch and puts them up on the thing there, and it was, it was a total disaster.
Okay, which, which road was that?
Peter.
Peter, okay. That first stretch from the silo road in?
Yep.
Now, that's under the subdivision part of it.
Yeah.
Now, who handles the subdivision lanes, roads, like that?
Well, see, we've, we've got, part of them in there are county roads.
Like Haun.
Well, even some of the ones in the subdivision. What we did is we went in and we just contracted everything in the subdivision with BSC to, you know, go in there.
Well, at that same time, they, they had the county blade in there along with BSC.
Oh, yeah, that was on Haun and Cactus.
And down by the airport road there.
Yeah, Cactus Lane, yeah.
I don't, I don't know where else they did it, but.
Yeah, we just do Haun and Cactus, and then we do the Camp Round Road.
Years ago, they did go in there with the county blade and blade all them lanes and roads in the subdivision there.
Yeah, that's, that's been a long, few years, but, yeah. We just figured it was a little bit easier rather than go in there in separate times, you know, with.
Well, basically, well, last year they come in there and done, oh, they done a sort of the same thing, but not, not as bad this time now, that it was a total disaster.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna take a little while to get down. You know, they, when they built those roads, they, they didn't actually even put the right material on them. I mean, they put some stuff out up there by, off of Springville, if you're off that old mine stuff. And they put that in there, and it's just, there's no binder, there's nothing, and it's just not very good. But we're trying to get things, you know, a little, little every year, try to haul some stuff in there.
Well, what, what gravelly did drag out of the ditch there, along with boulders and rocks and stuff like that, we went and rode the, the road material, the, right along with the edge of the road instead of placing it back across there and putting it on the road itself, so. I mean, it was a total disaster, total.
Alright, I'll have a look, see if we can do something different.
When you're out there with your rage and stuff like that smoothing out the cuts and ditches and like that in your driveway, that's not a good scene.
Yeah.
Bob, did you have a comment?
Well, I, I had a question, I guess, as long as Dana's here, and I don't know who has the answer, but probably all three of you. What's the status on the stuff at Deep Creek? You know, I thought they were gonna be replacing bridges and stuff, and I'm getting a lot of questions, some from here and a lot from White Sulphur. Okay, what's going on there? They've got signs, and, and the other day coming by there, they've got all sorts of things sitting there in that closed weigh station thing that they've got there, but are they gonna do anything this year, or what, what's going on?
They were supposed to, weren't they?
They're bidding it this year, but since 24. Yeah, supposed to start late spring.
Oh, see, everybody's under the impression that that was gonna start this year, this spring sometime. I don't know how we got that impression, but, but it's causing a lot of questions.
That road needs a lot of fixing real quick, like, 'cause we can't hardly get a tank through there in the spring.
Oh, thank you, that, I won't have to worry about driving through it for a while now.
Right, right, yeah, a little bit of retreat.
Just take the bumps.
Are they supposed to be doing that in the winter time?
I understood they were gonna be starting like March, April, May, somewhere in there. But they were gonna bid it out this year, this fall.
They're doing some more survey right away, you said there was, somebody here was the last meeting or two talking about it.
Establishing easements for the bridges.
Yeah, and I know they're gonna let that one out up at Winston's in August.
Alright. Also for next spring?
No, they're just gonna have them this fall.
Excellent.
Once they let it out, I think it's, they're gonna let it out first part of August or something, Jim Davies told me, and then they'll be, you know, starting, I think, September.
Excellent.
Hopefully they'll get it done.
Yeah, probably the difference is that's a little project, whereas Deep Creek is.
Yeah.
Miles and miles and miles.
Yeah, it shouldn't take too long, so.
Other than the railroad stuff, the rest of it should be good.
Yeah, no, it'll be, it'll go pretty quick, I think. Anyway, that's about it.
Alright, anything else Franklin?
You know, I had a comment on that just past the Razor, going towards Tomer Road there. It sure kinda, he was happy with that.
Yeah.
He just, he told me that a day or two ago.
Good, good. Yeah, that's a lot of, I mean, we, we got it mixed in good, I think everything will be. That upper stretch from the Cattle Guard back, you know, back to the bridge there, I think is gonna be it might be another time or two, might get a little bit muddy, but I don't think it'll be too bad, you know, we hauled that three-quarter rock on top, so.
We were out there beyond that road for the ATV run last weekend, I think it was. And we counted fifty vehicles in a two-hour stretch, and we were interrupted with the ATVers coming through. So, there's a lot of traffic on that road, yeah.
I wish Forest Service would be on it up above, do something there, really.
Yeah.
Anyway, I guess that's it.
Alright, thank you very much, welcome back.
Yep, thank you.
You betcha.
Alright, yeah, good afternoon.
Thanks, you too. Right, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. One question I did have Franklin was something we addressed some time ago. We have been borrowing the Board of Health's recording pen. We need some kind of an official county recording mechanism. Elaine had spoken, I believe, with Ann, and had suggested that we go ahead and purchase one or else purchase this one from the Board of Health and loan it to them. I think it would be appropriate to also have that as an official vote to follow through with the purchase order. They're not very expensive, but any thoughts or comment on that?
No, that's fine. I got a hundred dollar one there to tell you it's perfect and does a decent job, so. Or if you wanted to do that with the Board, you could try, yeah, I'd say.
Okay, very good, we will go ahead and pursue either ordering one or work with the Board of Health then. You know, can I ask that for that just in a motion so it's official?
Yeah, I want you to go ahead and get a loan recorder for handling our meetings.
Second, the motion has been moved and seconded to get a motion of recording to handle our meetings, all those in favor, say aye.
The only thing is, you want to amend, either work with the, the board or purchase a separate one, either way.
Okay, alright, I accept the, or, yes.
I guess you have that in there.
Alright, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Alright. And that's it, so Mary Nolan gets here. Yes, Cheryl?
We're at the end of the June quarter. Have you received a report from M.B.A.C. on Mr. Shilb's note and the status of that loan?
I don't know, but we can certainly look into it. I imagine that would probably go to the Cleveland Court of Treasurers office, but we'll look into it. See if we have that, if not, we'll go ahead and pursue it. We have an eleven fifteen and then an eleven thirty. You know what, I'm gonna see if Nicole is available to come in at eleven thirty if she's not waiting. Hey Nicole? Nicole?
I'd seen her go upstairs.
Did ya? Okay.
Tell me around, see if she's there.
Would, would you mind?
Yeah, I can do that.
Hey, thanks, very much.
Yes. She's coming down.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hey Nicole.
Hi.
We are early on our agenda. Are you waiting for any board members, or is this inconvenient to you in any way?
This is just like for me. Sorry, that. I have an open, but.
No, it's, it's our fault for calling in early.
I think I've got it all here now, so. This is one packet, there are two pieces there. There's an email and copies of what you are asking me to review here. And I have extra copies if anyone's interested.
What is this about?
Sunrise Estates.
I'll pick one.
It's about there, yeah. I have two more copies. You probably oughta. So, what I'm here for today. Gerald Olson is the owner and Bonnie is well of Lot 24 of Sunrise Estates. This is the original survey here, Sunrise Estates Phase Three. What they're looking to do, there is a twenty-foot easement along the southern boundary of Lot 24, if you see there. They're looking to amend that easement to be ten feet. It's currently a twenty-foot underground utility easement. The reason he wants it to be ten feet is that he has a, a building that he wants to erect there, but it cuts into his property. So, this is the very, very beginning phases of this project. I wanted to be sure that before he headed down that path of trying to amend this subdivision lot, which is not terribly difficult, but that if the commission had any concerns, that we can kind of follow up on those right now.
Okay, where about is this at?
Golf course runs right here.
Right above the golf course, Franklin.
Oh.
Right.
This is Sauer Lane right here.
It's at the end of the lane where Joanne lives.
Yeah, Joanne is.
On the other, on the other side of the street.
In Hayfield there, it's, we got hay there now.
Yeah.
I don't recall who we purchased it from, they just recently bought it.
The fire lane goes down that side. That's, it's on the southern boundary. There's a fire lane between there and the, and the Ahern's place.
So, Delger runs out here, this is Sauer coming in this way. And then that Sunrise Road is just a small little cul-de-sac subdivision road. So, the canal runs along the west.
Just the west side here?
Mm-hmm, yep, and then on the other side is the.
Madam President, may I, may I approach?
Absolutely, you live in that neighborhood, don't you, Mr. Gray?
I'm the president of the Homeowners Association there.
Oh, right.
Maybe Franklin, I could, I could help you. This is the lot we're talking about. The airport's over here. And Doug Ahern has the property over here. This is, there's an easement for a fire lane along the canal here, and it goes up and around to give a total access, two-point access to that fire lane. There's a twenty-foot easement here, partly for the fire road and partly for the utility easement. On all of these lots, there's a ten-foot utility easement on both sides of them all the way down.
And so, we're not looking at the fire road today. All I'm asking you to look at is the twenty-foot utility easement that's completely on the Olsons' property. And, and I'm really, I'm really not looking for a decision today, this is just an informational meeting. I just want the commission to maybe be thinking about if they have some concerns or questions, they can take that back to the Olsons.
So, that's a complete separate easement from the fire?
It is, yes.
One thing I would, I would suggest that you take a look at is the covenants.
And, yeah, and I'm going to bring that up here, that's part of the process.
I think, I think the covenants in, say that you can only build for the twenty feet of the of the top of your line, so that would only be.
That's only the front, you know, only the front and the rear.
There is also, isn't there covenant for the sides as well?
Ten feet.
So, ten feet from the ten-foot easement?
Ten feet from the property lines. So, basically, what I, what I'm looking for today from the commission, like I said, just, just some information. If the commission has questions or any concerns with this. The way this process will go, because the covenants do state that that twenty-foot utility easement will be, I'm just gonna read this verbatim, just so there's, there's no confusion. This is from the Sunrise Estates' original covenants. Sunrise Free Estates also reference that they will be a party to the Sunrise Estates covenant. So. Easements for the installation and maintenance of utilities are reserved over the rear twenty feet of each lot, which in this case would be the west boundary line, or as shown on the official plat. So, it's shown on the official plat as twenty feet on the southern boundary line. Within the ten-foot easement on the sides of the property, no structure, planting, or other material shall be placed or permitted to remain, which may damage or interfere with the installation or maintenance of utilities. The easement areas of each lot and all improvements in it shall be maintained continuously by the owner of the lot, except for those improvements for which a public authority or utility company is responsible. So, within the ten-foot easement on the sides of the property, so in this case the southern boundary line, that's a side lot line, no structure, planting, or other material shall be so placed or permitted to remain. So, if, if they were to build this building within ten feet of that, or within ten feet of their property line and keep that ten-foot easement that they're wishing to change this to open, they're still not in violation of the covenants. However, it would be the Olson's responsibility to go to the Homeowners Association and look to amend these covenants if indeed they wanted to move that twenty-foot easement to ten foot, simply because it states easements for the installation and maintenance of utilities are reserved over the rear twenty feet of each lot or as shown on the official plat. So, that's why I'm not looking for the commissioners to make a decision today, because, you know, the, the Olsons will still have to go through the process of having the COS printed, going to the Homeowners Association, and looking to amend this covenant. I just wanted to kind of clear up anything here on the government level before they went through this process.
What you'd like for them, correct me if I'm wrong, is if we were going to say there's no way we'd approve this, you want to tell him that before he goes through all the steps?
Exactly.
At this point, what you would like from us is not necessarily an assurance, yes, but to know if we would absolutely say no.
Correct, correct, because I don't want to send him down, down this path of amending the covenants for an entire subdivision, or even if they want to rewrite this covenants to say Lot 24, you know, they, they, there's, there's a number of ways they can amend these covenants so it's specific only to that certain lot. It's not difficult, it's just, it's just time consuming. And, you know, a matter of working with your neighbors. But I just, I didn't want to send the Olsons down that path if the commission were to say, oh, no, absolutely not, we don't want to touch it once they've already gotten all of this work done. This is basically the easy part for them.
So, as far as, as our information gathering, is there a reason that that would be twenty feet? Is it because it's adjacent to a fire lane, and does that have an effect?
Not that I can find, you know, and I've also ran this past the planning board, and we had, you know, just. Not that I can find, you know, and I've also ran this past the planning board and we had, you know, just, just kind of a bunch of question and answers in the brainstorming session on it. I've spoken with Mike Evans, because Northwestern Energy is the utility provider in that, and he assured me that he, there's no reason why Northwestern Energy would need it to be twenty feet. Um, the green box is actually in the northeast corner of Lot 24. Um, and so, the power is run from that box anyway. There is a power pole in the southwest corner, but they said they don't pull power from that. They pull from the green box. So, Lot 24 already has an existing house and garage with power. To get to that shop, Mike Evans said that he would come from that same line. Uh, he wouldn't even need to use this, this easement necessarily. There's nothing in it currently. And it's not affecting any subdivisions to the south. It's farmland to the south. Um, you know, if, if ever that farmland were to be developed or, you know, they needed to install power, they would have to have their own easements anyway. So, it's not as if it's, it's affecting any other landowners that I can see.
And he's not asking to get rid of the easement, just to shrink it?
To ten feet.
Yeah.
Similar to the ten feet on every other, uh, boundary line. So, and unfortunately, you know, these subdivisions were done before we actually had a full-on subdivision review process. So, the file consists of a very, very small stack report, within a half a page. So, I, I couldn't find any reason why that was ever set at twenty feet on that southern lot line. You know, it's, it's twenty feet on these rear lot lines, but I'm not sure why that was twenty feet on the southern lot.
And you, uh, Steve references MCA seventy-six dash three dash three oh one one, three oh five ones. What is that MCA? Do you know?
Uh, I'll pop my head. I'll pop my head. I thought you were gonna have it right here, but. You know, I would, I would imagine that it has something to do with the vacation of the subdivision, uh, itself, but I'm not, I'm not certain, but that's not what they're looking to do.
We could certainly look into that, um, art line.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, um, just be sure it doesn't have something in it that would preclude this from being able to be done.
You know, and it's not referenced, right, I'm sorry for interrupting you. You know, it's not referenced anywhere on his platoys. I'm not sure where he came with that.
Madam Chairman, can I offer?
Yes, sir.
Some information? And that, that, I believe, is the, uh, legal way that a, that, uh, covenants on a subdivision can be changed.
Okay.
I think you have to have a two-thirds vote, a, a two-thirds affirmative vote of all the property owners in that subdivision in order to make a change like that.
And I couldn't find anything in the Sunrise Estates covenants that stated a certain percentage. Um, so, they might have something written up in their Homeowners Association documents, but there's nothing in their covenants that states, um, that it would have to be any different than the fifty-one percent majority.
So, if, if Paul is right on the, uh, MCA, then that puts it back in Mr. Olson's hands following the, the process with the Homeowners Association. And the covenants would direct them on how to address these issues.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions, wrong clarification?
Go ahead with their, their part of it, Neil. They'll have to leave with the homeowners' creation and all that, so.
And then this will still go through the same process, and then the other COS that comes in. Um, you know, as you see on here, there is a line for the commission to sign. So, you would be needing to make a motion at that time, um, when it came to you, but.
I'd say pretty much hand you on the, on the whole word, if they're willing to make the change.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that as well. So, we're, we're just kind of in a holding panel.
Right, exactly, exactly. You have no concerns. Um, right now, I'm going to tell that one to anyone.
All right, very good. Thanks for coming in early, too.
I can take him if you want, and then I can just keep up.
Yeah, because we actually leave him till he gets the.
Sure, yeah.
I'm gonna keep mine, Nicole. I'll set chicken scratch, I'll open it.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Paul, for your input on that. That helps. All right, eleven fifteen. Mary Ellen Schnurr, quarterly mental health updates. Good morning.
Good morning.
Because the mental health, uh, board meetings are on Mondays, Mary Ellen, uh, attends those for us and represents the commission. And this happens around the state with a lot of different boards, uh, not necessarily just with Broadwater County. Welcome.
Well, for the record, my name is Mary Ellen Schnurr. I've been a resident of Broadwater County since nineteen fifty-seven. I'm a registered nurse with a specialty in community health. I've been an outpatient mental health nurse and an outpatient mental health manager, case manager. At this time, I am employed by no one. And I serve as a volunteer for Broadwater County Commissioners in this capacity. All of the printing copies you receive were printed at my own expense. Okay, um, we meet quarterly here at the commission. The, the board of mental health meets monthly. For a thirteenth county organization, and as you mentioned, Laura, there are several of us on the Board of Directors who represent our county commission, um, as a, as a citizen volunteer. The Center for Mental Health has adopted the preliminary budget for the coming year, and we based it on the income of eighty percent of current Medicaid rates. The proposed fiscal year two thousand fourteen Medicaid rates haven't been decided. We probably won't know until about the third week of September what those will be. Uh, but we know for sure that outpatient family therapy and group therapy reimbursement rates will definitely go down. And the budget does not anticipate any income from Broadwater and Marred Counties, because again, we have no therapist of our own. The center is sending a therapist down from Helena on an occasional basis, based on how many requests do they have for appointments here and on whether they have a therapist available with the time in there to come down. Somebody made some mathematical calculation in the world of those such things that has taken Broadwater County off the roster of counties that qualify for student loan forgiveness for medical providers. Yes, and, um, so this is why we lost our most recent therapist. She, she couldn't, uh, continue to work for what we can pay her at the Center for Mental Health without student loan forgiveness. And I did get a, a, a calculation from the Department of Public Health about how that is, um, how that is all calculated, but I don't have all the census figures and all in Broadwater County to, you know, to be able to make sense of it. I do think that it must be an error. I just can't see that, that we're so well medically served and prosperous that we don't qualify for student loan forgiveness for those people. Um, Montana's rate of payment for mental health care center workers is among the lowest in the nation. Western Montana Mental Health, which is Missoula, Bozeman, Butte, um, and then those counties, their case managers, um, earn ten thousand per year less than the national average. And our case managers make two dollars per hour less than theirs do. And all of our mental health agents pay less than private organizations do. We're losing two employees per week because they can make more money somewhere else. Wow, I guess, you know, we have three hundred and some authorities, four hundred. The school districts have begun to set up as mental health agencies, and they don't need to have anybody with prescriptive authority on staff. Um, they don't need to provide any crisis services or anything like that, so they can kind of, uh, cream off, uh, for Medicaid and so forth, the, the easy money. And, um, they are paying huge amounts, bonus, sign-on bonuses in some districts. We had one of our therapists recruited by a school, uh, a school district that, right up front, was offered a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus. And then after that was gonna get an hourly, substantial hourly pay raise.
Wow.
So, it, it's a, it's a big, uh, challenge. The psychiatrists as well, and all the psychiatrists we have in Great Falls come from within ninety miles of Great Falls, born and raised Montanans. That's why they're back here. Um, it's the only reason they stay. I, and they're, uh, sometimes on call to come to Helena, because Helena doesn't have enough psychiatrists at times. So, um, the commission, you should have gotten a letter in June sometime, which was a bill for last year's county mail levy. It should have come from the Department of Public Health and Human Services. Unless you had paid that earlier in the year, you would have gotten a bill in June, or should have. Uh, and as commonly referred to as Medicaid match, it, it really isn't Medicaid match, but that's the name for it. In July, you'll receive a contract for the coming year. And you'll also get a letter from our, uh, CEO, Sidney Blair, that will explain the rationale behind the center's request that you sign the contract, but hold the money in reserve till the end of the year. Um, and in, in this little pamphlet, uh, that I gave you, there's a handout provided at our last board meeting to explain how the county mail levies have been handled by the state over the past eleven years, not to the full benefit of our people. There's no legislative authority for the state to, to collect this county mail levy money from the counties. It was done as an offer eleven years ago. The mental health agencies offered to do this to the state so they could get their federal Medicaid match, because at that time, the state budget was in arrears. Well, now, the state budget is plenty healthy to, to satisfy Medicaid match federally. But they're still taking in the county money, the county mail levy money, and then redispersing it. And when they do that, only forty percent actually goes to the mental health outpatient center. The rest of it goes to institutions. So, our people are winding up, uh, you know, on the short end, especially when you look at the financial picture that I just painted you for the, for the centers. And, um, the legislature overwhelmingly passed House Bill Twelve, which would provide us an extra one-term or one-time funding for the crisis center treatments and supervised housing of severely mentally ill people. And the governor, um, vetoed that bill in the interest of protecting a budget surplus. And that's fine. He can do that. However, one of his comments was that there's already a lot of money in mental health. And our county's county, I think, is proof that there's not a lot. There's not even enough. We have residents in desperate need of mental health services. Some have taken their own lives. And very possibly, that wouldn't have come to be if we'd had somebody local here that they could use for a resource or their families could use for a resource. And we do put that, that mail levy money in to the state every year, and we're not giving back what we should have given you. On the financial page, you see I made a little note at the bottom of the last page to myself. And I just copied it for you as a little heads-up. When they, when they figure all those income and expenses for each county, of course, Broadwater County has next to no income, since we don't have any local provider, but we're still paying rent for our building and so on and so forth. And, um, they kind of have lumped Broadwater, Marred, and Jefferson Counties together a, a lot in these services that we've been, um, short of. And I noticed that, that Jefferson County didn't have any mileage assessment, and neither did Marred County. And that isn't coming out of our own county funds, but it's coming out of what's identified as our obligation within the organization. And so, I just made a note to myself that, you know, why, why are we sharing mileage with these other counties? Which, um, they, they're, they went back. They, they realized there must be something wrong with that picture. So, hopefully, uh, the next budget that we get July twenty-second, or the next budget report we get July twenty-second, we'll have corrected that error and we'll look like these other counties are paying their share of mileage too. And, and Broadwater County isn't gonna look like the biggest, blackest hole in the Center for Mental Health's budget. We really aren't. It just goes that way.
Sure.
So, um, as far as the Center for Mental Health, you know, has come a long ways financially in the last few years and has, has really tightened up productivity and, and so forth, and I think is, is doing a great job. We have a new strategic plan that's just about done. Probably, uh, get a report on that in another July meeting also. So, I just, um, think our counties have to kind of stay on the, on the job here to encourage the state to do its part in, in letting us treat our mentally ill people. So, if there's any questions?
Just, just one on that DPHHS letter. We did get that. Um, and it will be followed up by a letter with, it's, it stated that, uh, it wasn't due. The funds were not due until December thirteenth, so we just kind of put it in the file for budget. Um, does it need to be signed, though, prior to December?
The contract, the contract should be signed.
Okay.
If they, if they sent, sent a contract with that, that should be signed.
Okay, I don't recall signing a contract.
I don't think you got the contract yet.
Okay.
I think you just got the letter with the bill, so-called, so, so you can hold on to that until it's due. Um, and then when you sign the contract, then, Western Montana, actually, I think their counties have drafted a letter and, and probably that's kind of what you'll get too. So, each county will explain when, when they send that signed contract back, that they will keep that money set aside for use in their county by the mental health agencies. And I don't, um, Center for Mental Health was still working on its, on its amount of money. But Western Montana just sent their letter out and, and they wound up providing five hundred thousand dollars in uncompensated services for the people in their counties. Because, and, and the amount of mail levy money that's withheld that the state took from those counties was four hundred ninety-six thousand. So.
Wow.
Right there, you see, you see why they decided, maybe they don't want their counties to give that money to the state. They might need to pay for it themselves, you know?
Absolutely.
Any questions?
No, thank you for that. We did get your email from Elaine.
Oh, okay.
From, uh, May twenty-second.
Yeah, and that kind of addressed the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I, I thought you guys needed to know about that, maybe fortunately even, that that was common. It's one of the disadvantages of me coming here quarterly.
But, um, you do a good job, Lois. Thank you very much. Any questions, Franklin? All right. Thanks, Mary Ellen. All right, we are finished, except for waiting on any COSs that might be coming in at eleven forty-five. Um, I will take this time to see if there's any public comment.
Do an article once a quarter?
All right. If you guys would like to stay and listen to any COSs, you are more than welcome to. Uh, if we don't see one within, I'm gonna say like, oops, eleven fifteen, we'll break early for lunch. And you can stay. There's just nothing else to do. You have fifteen minutes. Nicole?
Yes, I just wanted to bring some information on this seventy-six three three oh five one.
Thank you.
Um, they were asking about, it's basically just for the vacation of the utility easement. So, it doesn't have anything to do with the covenants.
Okay. And, and he's not asking for the vacation?
No, just the vacation of that, of that ten-foot, uh, section of easement.
Okay.
And since it's the utility easement, he has to reference this MCA code.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll be gone in the next couple of weeks, so.
Your first?
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be seen for a while. So, I don't know if Brenda will be coming out or. Just being her on Monday, so.
So, then she's gonna be here?
Yeah, yep. And it's been my way for a while. I just moved up the nights.
And it's been my way for a while, I just moved up the nights, just because she will, maybe coming in. Just bring her for a while.
So you know you haven't?
There's two girls here. Yeah, they surprised enough. Pretty excited, just kept the room all finished yesterday, so.
Nice.
Pretty happy.
Oh, you're delicious.
Thank you.
Hope all goes well.
Yeah, and everything has gone super smooth. It's all pretty smooth. Oh, boy, yeah. Yeah, I, I love.
When you're not here, then although time has come.
Yeah, the fifteenth is due, so, seven days. You know what, today, tomorrow we have to set a day, because they don't let you go a week or two anymore. So we have to set a day, a day and a half.
A little bit of joy.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yep. Coming out of the woodwork.
Oh, boy. Started to say that I, by the way.
Claim for Michelle, she sits for twenty-seven, fifty.
Never got anything done.
Nope, was out on the line.
He just tried a different text or something, so.
That's my understanding, that's the major reason. You can start it on those if you want to. Wouldn't he, wouldn't he give up, or?
Yeah, no kidding.
Go and take another step, or?
Yeah.
What else have you got to do?
Yeah, no kidding, it's a lot of money. I just don't have time, if I was in there, I'd come here and sit every week and just. That's for sure. I always have the sheriff's office, just like. I have this job, I'm like, outside of my job, I, you know, like neighbor disputes and things like that.
Hi.